To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the agenda of flexibility.
Second.
We have a motion to second to accept the agenda of flexibility. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Kurt, what you have on your own business?
Quite a few items. First is just to bring to your attention the need to have a discussion about Major Moose's committee and the recommendations that we're going to make towards that committee upcoming. I believe you have some projects that you are considering, and so if you could have a discussion about that and give some direction to Kathy so that she can properly advertise for the joint session that you're having with council, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll start off. We've been talking about this Major Moose fund for quite a while here and a lot of things, people coming and asking for and everything. We have a project coming up with the Highway Garage. And I know, I feel that I think we need to take the rest of that Major Moose money and earmark that for the Highway Garage. We started out with that, I think it was around, what, around forty million or so when we started out with that? Do you remember? Thirty-seven, somewhere in there. But we spent a lot, a lot of different things throughout the years. I think by earmarking the rest of this for the Highway Garage, that's going to help with the taxes for one. We have to get a huge bond or anything to build this. That money's there, let's use it, let's keep the best interest of the taxpayers, I think, in mind when we do this. And we don't have to worry about taking, well, the council has to worry about making higher taxes for that. So that's going to be a plus for them. But I think it's what, around thirteen million in there right now, or something, twelve?
With the plans that you have, you already have some of the money appropriated at the end of the year. I expect to have eleven-four.
Eleven-four, so.
Is that with all the repayments coming back?
Yes, by the time those get repaid, by the time we pay out what we've already planned to pay, that is expected balance.
So I don't know what you guys are thinking. It's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should do what we have to do, advertise it, and then put it in the fund for the Highway Garage.
So this is a recommendation to the council, or?
Big recommendation, I think, to the council. We have a joint meeting coming up on March ninth. Just give us a recommendation to them that that's what we'd like to do, and then we'll, we'll discuss it probably more at that joint meeting.
So do we need a motion to advertise it?
No, I think a motion just to send that recommendation to council and Kathy will know.
Do you want this advertised or an additional appropriation for the March ninth meeting? Or do you want to wait until after the joint session on March ninth and then have it next call?
I think we just traditional appropriations in that March ninth.
I mean, if, if the council, if it doesn't pass through the joint session, it doesn't matter if we advertised it or not, it's not going to hurt anything.
Okay.
I mean.
It's just our case.
Because we advertise it, doesn't mean we're spending it. Doesn't mean they agreed with it. So I'd make a motion that we advertise the figure you came up with that was eleven point four.
Eleven, eleven point four, seven, seven, six thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
That's a little more specific towards the new Highway Garage we're proposing to build and pass that to that council deposit recommendation.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to second to pass the council positive recommendation to advertise the remaining of the Major Moose money for the proposed Highway Garage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. What else you got, Kurt?
One of the things then, and if I get some of those that are on your agenda, Kathy interrupting, then I'm just taking them as I saw from the paving project for the sheriff's office, basically down there. Project is ready to go out for RFQs and request for quotes. And to do so, we need a finding on the record that this is a routine maintenance project. We have signed affidavit from your county engineer to that effect. Theron has taken the time to work with the sheriff to sort of evaluate the project, and we believe it fits within the definition of routine maintenance as opposed to a public works project because of the nature of the work they're going to do. So, but in order to comply with that statute, we need the commissioners to make a finding that this project is a routine maintenance project. Motion to that effect would be helpful.
Agree with that?
I'll make a motion that we have a finding that it's routine maintenance for the purposes of the quotes.
Second.
Yeah, motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And then the sheriff also has an intercom station replacement contract with, you know, with a company that's called Intercom Innovation. And it basically is something that you talked about at your last meeting. I think he gave authority to the sheriff to have appropriations, and he's gone through that process. It's with Security Automation Systems, SAS is what I think the sheriff refers to him as. And if he has more comments, he can of course provide them to you. But we've been through the documentation, and price is thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars, and it needs the president of the commissioner's signature and approval in the meeting. So if you're willing and ready to do that, that money, Kathy, has been appropriated now, correct?
On the term of his commissary fund.
So he has.
Yeah.
So SAS, a security automated automation system, is a Spurs intercom station replacement. It's thirty-six thousand four hundred.
I make a motion to approve the sheriff to spend the money, SAS, thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars for intercom station for the sheriff's office.
And the president's name?
And have the president sign.
You always got to. Second that. I just want to make sure it's clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion to second to approve the sheriff's intercom system for the jail down there and have the president sign. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item also is for the sheriff's office. He's got us busy this month.
He's needy. He is very needy. Must have somebody.
He's been busy, we've been busy with him. So he is, has been working on SOPs and has had some issues with the current vendor. The vendor is called LexiPol, L-E-X-I-P-O-L. There's a contract with LexiPol that he would like, and we agree with, to terminate, and that requires formal decision here as well as authority on our, for us to send out a notice of termination. It was signed back in May of twenty twenty by the previous sheriff, and it's just kind of run its course. And our current sheriff would like to go a different route, and he has plans to do that and, and explain those plans if he'd like to. But we recommend that you authorize our office to send out a notice of termination to LexiPol.
I think sheriff's okay with that.
Yeah, I can add to it. All right, I make a motion, excuse me, make a motion to give approval to Mr. Bachman, the county attorney. Do you send a letter of termination to LexiPol for their business?
Second.
Yeah, motion to second to have the county attorney send a termination letter to LexiPol for the sheriff's office SOP program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay. Next item also for the sheriff's office is dealing with his jail work release program fees, some housekeeping matters, and to clean up the language to make it consistent with the state law. And that basically outlines the program fees for work release. And so I'd like you to consider approving this ordinance, which would then also require, if you want to approve it today, a waiver of second reading.
We just got all three signatures.
So I'm assuming he's okay with this one, too.
Must be. Unless it's the sheriff's meeting today, so.
It is the sheriff's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero-two dash seventeen dash A, meaning the county jail work release program fees.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to waive second reading.
Second. The motion to second to waive second reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is for you to consider, this is on behalf of the veteran service officer, Mr. Alex Conley, and it is an update to the burial allowance ordinance that makes it also current with state law. We did some changes. Mr. Conley brought that to our attention and we're, and we've made those changes, and it's ready for you to consider basically authorizing about reimbursing up to a thousand dollars per funeral and for the setting of the grave marker. And there's a claim procedure for doing that. So if you're willing to, if you'd like.
I don't think Alan's out there and seen him, so.
But he did indicate that he approved it.
Yeah. I talked to Alan about it, too. We both agree, we'd like to raise that to a thousand dollars.
Just, just for the clarification, the amount we wanted to raise it to, the state will not allow us to raise it to that level?
Tried, you and I agree, instructed me to raise it to thirteen fifty, and the max the state allows for some reason is about.
Okay.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. But I guess it is important for people to know that we tried to increase it beyond that, and the statute just doesn't allow.
Yeah. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero-two dash seventeen dash B, raising the burial allowance for veterans.
Second.
Yeah, motion to second to approve the ordinance. I'm raising the burial allowance for veterans to a thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
A motion to waive second reading.
Second.
The motion to second to waive second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item is, we're seeking approval and permission on behalf of the health department to file a lawsuit against Rodney B. Howe. Mr. Howe's property has been the subject of many health department meetings, and health officer, the health officer ordered animal removed back in September of twenty twenty-four. So this goes back a long ways. Then in February of twenty twenty-five, Dr. Conley provided a second order. They've tried to work with him for, as you can see, many, many, many months, if not a couple of years.
Two years, almost.
Yes. The property is located at one 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 zero five east, three fifty south. He's ignored the health officer's orders, and we would like to obtain authority from you to pursue legal action by filing a complaint to request the court to order enforcement, or to enforce the orders that have been issued by Dr. Conley. The complaint is drafted, it is ready to go, and with your permission today, we'll likely file it today or tomorrow. So we're looking for permission to file a complaint on behalf of the health department against Rodney B. Howe.
I make a motion to allow the county attorney to go forward with filing a suit against Rodney B. Howe for the health department.
Second.
We have a motion to second to allow the county attorney to file a complaint against Rodney Howe on behalf of the health department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. I have several other matters, but I believe they're all on your agenda. So I'll tell you what they are ahead of time, just so that if we get there and we forget something, we come back and let me have an opportunity to, to present them. Talking about the pagers that are supposed to be, we have quotes coming out on pagers, and I think Stuart, the vendor will be here probably, isn't already?
He's there.
I see him.
He's out there.
By eye. We also have a contract with government utilities, technology services, things that we've worked on for your tax sales. We have the assessors form eleven agreements. And of course, you have your, there's going to be three documents for the planning commission. And then your hearing on the Oprah brand application. So I'll hold off on talking about those at the moment, but I do have comments on them as you go along. So thank you.
Okay, Stuart, pagers.
Let's make sure they can hear you loud and clear, Stuart.
I'm sure they can. So we did receive the three quotes. The one was pretty high. The other two that we received, pagers and the chargers, were the exact same price difference. In the two was the shipping and programming. So the one company is going to do the programming for, for no charge and not charge us a little over twenty-five hundred dollars for shipping. So talked to the other fire chiefs, and they have no problem with the J and K quote. I don't see any good reason to spend an extra three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. So on behalf of the fire chiefs, I guess the, the recommendation would be to go with the J and K award for one hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
And while you're considering, just for the record, do we have money appropriated to this, Kathy? What's the status?
We do not. So they'll give me direction on where they want to advertise for the council on their March ninth meeting.
And I believe these are held open for sixty days, Stuart, and I have a.
I think it's sixty days.
So we want to act within that period of time.
Yeah, the J and K is good till April tenth.
Okay, good. So you'll want to obviously have a decision made before then. And you could decide today to award it subject to, or you can wait and talk to the council and then come back, just as long as we don't forget before the deadline.
I think we can award the subject to the, the money, because it's going to come out of the safety tax, so.
Is that where we're going to pull it?
Yeah.
Safety tax? I mean, it's appropriate if, as long as it's available.
Yeah. And these are pagers that the fire departments need. I mean, there, it has not been a good system. They had, they, they need upgraded badly.
I think out of the, the two options I think the county has, I think this is the better route. It puts the maintenance and everything of the towers back on the state. So this paging would be going off of the, the state towers that they're maintaining anyway.
Unless you guys want to build more towers.
And.
So that's.
We're all homeowners, so we're for it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's something. I mean, you know, we have, we have volunteer fire departments out here that, you know, they don't have big budgets and everything, and that's just what we can do to help them. I think it's a good thing.
That's all they have.
So I think we just make a motion on this and.
Yeah, and for the record, I don't know if we've ever publicly stated what the three quotes are and from who they come. So if somebody could do that and has that information.
You got it there, Stuart, because I only got the two here.
I don't have.
You got the third one there, Kathy?
Unless we've already done it, I just.
I believe they were stated in the first.
I was going to say, I think.
I do have them.
I know the two I have here, J and K has.
These are the very originals. Those are the two revised.
Yeah. J and K was one hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. ERS was one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-eight and two cents. And I think the last one was from first due communications, which was one hundred and thirty-six thousand twenty-five dollars and forty cents. So.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve this on the condition that the council appropriates the money to award the, the bid to J and K Communications for the new pagers, or radios or pagers.
Pagers.
Pagers. For the volunteer fire departments.
And Peter, does it require a signature? So you want to add to authorize it to sign outside of the meeting after the appropriation?
It does.
Yeah, and I guess I'd make that in my motion, that it be signed outside the meeting at a later date by the president.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the J and K communications pending approval from, for the funds from the council and have the president sign outside the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Stuart.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a health board appointment.
I have that information if you wanted. The applicant would be filling the term that was left vacant by Matt Grossman. That would be for four years through December thirty-one of twenty twenty-nine. This is, just so that everybody understands, not the position that comes from the three people that are to be recommended by the town of Lagrange. We're still waiting on those. And this person is a registered nurse, but it doesn't count towards those three people that we're supposed to be getting. This person has been certified by the Democratic chairman as a Democrat, so we can utilize that in our politically balanced attempts with the health department. And I think her name is pronounced Kathy Prisbola, if I was to say that correctly. So you're looking to appoint Kathy Prisbola for a four-year term through December thirty-one of twenty twenty-nine, replacing Matt Grossman.
Yeah, I make a motion to appoint Kathy Prisbola, I probably messed that up, to the health board as a, been certified, but.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to second to approve Kathy to the health board.
Aye.
I'm not going to try that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Next one's, oh, the sheriff again.
This one might be cheaper.
Last one for the day, I promise.
Yeah.
Thanks for the approval on the other ones. And then as far as the one at LexiPol, like I said, I'm going to get more information on the ISA one this week, but we'll be, we'll be ready to move on that. So the last one I have is just request permission to, use a commission to go out of state for a week-long training.
Detective.
For my detective.
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff send his detective out of state for a training.
Second. And he's commissioned.
Oh, and he's commissioned.
Yeah. And motion to second to approve the out-of-state travel for the detective and the use of the, his commission for the travel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Council on aging, is Sherry out there?
Yeah, she's there.
I thought I saw her. Yeah, she's back there.
You keep sending me all these emails and DocuSigns and.
Yeah, DocuSign, and then I had him sign it in the wrong place, and Endot wouldn't take it. So then he had to sign it again, and he told me I was needy as well. I said, that's okay, my husband says I'm expensive, so I can deal with it. I just have our fourth quarter claim that that's what we sent, because I had to have it uploaded into the Endot software to close out the year. So it was just our fourth quarter claim for seventy-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which was what was remaining on the grant. Can I do my year in review?
We did this before.
Okay.
That's fine, I already signed it, so.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the claim, that has been retroactively signed by the president.
She was angry. I'll second that motion. We have motion to second to approve the claim retroactive to the day I signed that on the, on February twelfth.
There you go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I wanted to close out the year. We have, there's FTA training today in Columbus, Indiana, and then tomorrow, I have mine tomorrow in Columbus. They're doing cost allocation, so it'll be a great day. Because, you know, the four-hour drive there, this day in, standing there going over financials, and then the drive back. It's great. Anyway, I did like a short year in review. You, you can.
I was like, you can.
It's a workaround.
Thanks. Um, I just, this is a cool picture that I took in our back parking lot. We came up with an organizational mission. We already had like the council on aging mission, and then I'm not going to read everything to you, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can read, right?
We have it right here, we can read it.
Okay. Okay. So twenty twenty-five impact at a glance. There was, this is for transportation, three thousand two hundred thirty-eight individuals served. That's thirty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-five trips, four hundred and forty-five thousand miles, and twenty-three thousand five hundred twenty-four service hours. And then our phone calls are crazy, so I just put eighteen, that, we have to track it, eighteen thousand seven hundred two calls, and we added three hundred and ninety-one new clients. The total budget for expenses for transit alone was one point four million. And then it's, it's hard to track like this, puts out like medical quality of life, which is well-being. But we're not just tracking people going to work, it's considered well-being. So I wish we could track that alone, because that's huge for what we do. But then we also do Medicaid. So that was, we collected thirty-two thousand in Medicaid reimbursements. We denied three hundred and thirty in county. We don't have, we have to report that to Endot. We don't track out-of-county denials. That would be way more. And then for our senior center, we had one thousand two hundred and sixty-one bingo people, which that's very important to them. Our luncheon, we served nine hundred and seventy-four meals. So like yesterday, for instance, and if you're not cooking the food, you don't really care, but I had fifty people sign up for our luncheon and seventy-two showed up. So it's kind of diff, and I told them ahead of time, you might not get the dessert I made, you might get ice cream out of the freezer. So call and sign up ahead of time. We had five hundred and one participants for exercise class, which she only does it, she doesn't do it in winter because she doesn't want people to come out. So we did two hundred and fifty foot clinic visits. Our food pantry, there was two hundred and fifty-five trips for that. We loaned out equipment, like walkers, wheelchairs, toilet risers, that type of thing. We have to track that as well. So that was one thousand two hundred and seventy items. And then we delivered four hundred and forty-seven bags of groceries. And then the community engagement, we did nine thousand three hundred newsletters, two hundred and ninety-eight volunteer hours, which comes out to be over ten thousand dollars in kind value. And that is Kevin, and I didn't ask for your permission to use your picture.
I know you didn't.
It looks like you forced a bee to be in.
Had a gun in my back.
Yeah, that was at one of our luncheons. So, and Steve, our driver, and then Trina, Bowen, our other board member. So for the transit numbers, we did forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-three gallons, which is one hundred and thirty-three thousand in fuel. And yes, I was contracted, so we did save money. Thanks, Kevin. The LCAT revenue that we collected on the vans was two hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and ninety. Out-of-county trips that we collected was seven thousand two hundred and ninety-one. And then the three B, which that's the senior donations within the county, that was seven thousand eight hundred and one dollars. And I put why it matters, access to medical care, ability to remain employed, food and essentials, reduced isolation, independence in rural county. And then, thank you, we are proud. We are proud to serve Lagrange County. And I said, I mean, you're not seeing all the numbers, but it's insane how many people we are taking to work. Think about the impact that we have on access to public transportation and all the people that we have to take to work every day. But without our pastor agreement, we couldn't do that. So thanks.
Sure, you didn't mention anything about veterans. You hold veterans, you don't keep that separate?
No.
You hold, okay.
No, but if they tell us, then we do transport them to the VA. Just, we tell them by donation. It depends, because there's not as much available at the VA as what there used to be. So we do work with them as well. Like, if they're going to get. Like, if they're going to get, there's somebody that goes to get injections once a month, which is not at the VA, so he pays us half price of what it would cost. So as long as they tell us, we will work with them.
And veterans are at a no charge?
Yes.
Donation's accepted, though.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot do. I mean, they realize they can't get themselves there for, you know, for whatever reason, so even if they still drive here locally, they don't go to Fort Wayne, so...
Nice service for them, though. I just wanted to make sure you noted that, thank you.
Yes. But do you guys have any questions?
No.
I was just handed another recall from Kay when I walked in for one of my vans. It's never-ending.
We have nineteen vans total, am I correct?
Yes, and our one van that we run every day runs fourteen hours a day, just turned three hundred thousand miles.
New garage is done.
Well, the gas still isn't hooked up.
Five attempts.
They were there all day, ran the line, but it's not hooked up, so...
Good luck on the sixth try.
Well, I kind of jinxed it, because last year I said, yeah, right, it'll, because he said it should be done in December. I said, no, it'll be done in the spring, right when we don't need the heat. Yeah.
You know, you waiting on Nipco?
Yep.
Yeah, so I said, I think we need a finding.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's done, and we were able to park in there, even though it wasn't heated in the winter, which was way better, like with all the ice, I mean, it was wonderful. So, okay, well, thanks.
Thanks, Sherry.
All right, so nine o'clock, we have a public hearing for Ocre Grant, second public hearing.
Do we need to, is this just for them, a lot of public hearings, is it just an event thing, or we have to make a motion for this?
I would do a motion.
I'll make a motion, we allow, Dana, is that right?
Sandra Temes.
Oh, where, I don't even see that on here.
It's okay.
Okay, Sandra, yeah, Region Three, conduct a public hearing for the Ocre Grant.
Second. Have motion second to have Sandra do the public hearing for the motion grant. All those in favor, say aye. All in favor? I just, my mind's going someplace else.
We got it, it's okay. Thanks, commissioners. Okay, so as I said, I'm Sandra Temes with Region Three A. I am the executive director and grant administrator with Region Three A, and we are assisting LaGrange County with the Community Development Block Grant. This program is funded by Title One of the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, as amended. These funds are to be used for new construction of a building to accommodate Level Four Recovery Housing. On February twenty-second, LaGrange County will be applying to the Indian Office of Community and Rural Affairs for federal funding from housing and urban development. The total amount of CDBG funds requested is seven hundred and fifty thousand. The amount of CDBG funds to be used for activities that will benefit low and moderate income persons is estimated at three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The applicant also proposes to expend an estimated one hundred and fifty, excuse, one hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars in non-CDBG funds. These funds will be derived from one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars from Inspiration Ministries Cash on Hand, and five hundred dollars from the LaGrange County opioid fund. This is the second public hearing, which must be conducted before the application can be submitted. The deadline for the grant is February twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-six. This is a competitive grant, and we will be competing with other applications from across the state. We will learn if the grant is funded in spring of two thousand and twenty-six. Kathy, has the county received any comments?
I have not.
Okay. I would like to give an overview, I'd love to say it's brief, however, it's a little long-winded. The project will construct a recovery housing facility on a parcel of land in LaGrange County on State Row Nine, near the LaGrange County Jail. The proposed recovery housing facility will feature five bedrooms, five bedrooms with closets and storage that meet INARR standards, eighteen beds along with four full bathrooms. It includes an open concept kitchen connected to a spacious dining room, three large gathering spaces, and a bonus study room on the third floor. To support residents, the home will have two laundry rooms, one on each floor, three offices for clinical services, case management, and peer support, as well as mechanical rooms on both floors. The facility will be restricted to men and will provide eight beds for court-involved individuals and seven beds for veterans. The facility will accommodate only men in need of treatment for substance abuse. The project goals are to develop and expand recovery home services in LaGrange County, and to help meet community health and wellness needs. Next, I'd like to go over the scoring criteria for this grant. There are a total of seven hundred points available. Applications must achieve a minimum score of four hundred and fifty points to be eligible for an award. Points are achieved in six ways: national objective, community distress factors, local match contribution, Indiana recovery residence designation, feasibility study, program design factors, and program-specific points. The national objective category is worth a hundred points. The national objective for all RHP projects is low and moderate income limited clientele. This means that there is a presumption that at least fifty-one percent of all that will be served by the facility are low and moderate income. Based on this, our project would receive fifty-one points in this category, as well all other projects. The community distress factors category is worth a hundred and fifty points. Various factors are used to determine the distress of the community. Ocre has partnered with State Stats Indiana, which is an Indiana university entity, to analyze and calculate the distress of Indiana small towns, or small cities, towns, counties, and townships. Factors used to calculate the community distress points used for CDBG scoring include percentage of households with income under poverty level, median household income, percent of used housing units that are vacant, median home value, unemployment rate, labor force, and labor force participation. The community distress, distress, my goodness, distress score for LaGrange County is forty-six point one. The local match category is worth twenty-five points. This is based on the percentage of local funds devoted to the project, not grant request. We would get one point per percentage of local match, with a cap of twenty-five points, and our project will be funded at twenty-five, or twenty percent local match, so we'll get twenty points in this category. The project of design factor is three hundred points, and is split into three areas. These areas include the project description, which is, is the project clearly defined as to determine the eligibility. This area is worth fifty points. Next is project need, is the community need for the project documented and well-compelling? This area is worth a hundred and twenty-five points. One way to demonstrate need is letters of support. If you would like to write a letter of support of this project, we ask that you get these letters to us by this Thursday, so that it can be included in the application. We ask that letters of support focus on why the project is needed for the county, and why you believe it is a priority. The last area is financial impact. Why is the grant assistant necessary to complete this project? And this area is worth a hundred and twenty-five points. The program-specific points is worth sixty-five points. The first area of non-entitlement community, the first area is non-entitlement communities, this area is worth ten points, and a maximum of ten points will be awarded to the applicants that are non-entitlement. The second area is beds available to pregnant women or women with dependent children, this area is worth fifteen points. A maximum of one point will be awarded per new bed that is provided by the facility that is available to pregnant women or women with dependents, up to fifteen points. So this will not receive any of those points. The third area is individuals with justice involvement. This area is worth ten points. A maximum of one point will be awarded per new bed that is provided by the facility that is available to persons involved in the court ordered rehabilitation, up to ten points. The fourth area is beds available to veterans, worth fifteen points. A maximum of one point will be awarded per new bed that is provided by the facility, and made available, available to veterans, up to fifteen points. The fifth area, fifth area is project sustainability. This area is worth fifteen points. A maximum of fifteen points will be awarded for the documentation of national opioid settlement funds being used as project match. There are bonus points available with a maximum of twenty-five points. It is the Division of Mental Health and Addictions Policy to encourage medication-assisted treatment amongst providers. As such, a grant application should include how the provider will support residents in their recovery through the acceptance of individuals on medication for treatment of their substance use disorder. Applications that include policies written in a manner to encourage and support the use of medications, including but not limited to nicotine replacement, long-acting injectables, and daily medicine for substance use disorder, will be awarded a maximum of twenty-five points. So we can now open up for public comments. If you would like to speak, I would ask that you state your name before speaking. Any public comments?
Well, you already spoke once before, so I mean, if you're gonna tell me the same thing, just make it brief.
I will. So, I know, as a faithful follower of Jesus, we've, we know that this, this program works, it's a, it's a restoration program, and we're excited to see it come to this, to this point, to LaGrange County. And since it's come, we've become a stakeholder, my wife and I have become a stakeholder and invested in this, this program, so we're very excited to see it come. They, this will become a point to restore this county, we become an asset to this county. On that behalf, I, I applaud you for, for doing this. As commissioners, I want to thank you for helping us get to this point, I want to thank you for donating the land when we get this grant, and I appreciate that. Kurt, I want to thank you for the extra effort, because I know we made you jump through a bunch of hoops to get to this point, and I know it was a headache and a hassle, so thank you, because I know that it was a lot of, a lot of point at that point. And this will be an asset, because of tax dollars that we'll save on this, and can go to the county and do other things for that. So I am very much in support of this, so that's where we're at, that's why. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Scott Vanderbeck, I'm supportive of this project. I hope that when it's finished, the, the gentlemen that come to the building have a chance to look across the street and see the cemetery, and reflect on what they've done to, to their life to bring them there, and what they'll do in the future to get to the cemetery, and that their choice for being with other Christians brings them to a choice for living with their family, with Christ, and that decision rules out generation by generation that affect our community well. And I hope that you have the opportunity to, someday for someone to come visit you in a coffee shop and say, thanks for your decisions, it's changed my life. Thank you.
My name's Suzanne Brown, I am a co-leader of Celebratory Recovery in LaGrange. I am also a recovered meth addict. When I was getting clean, I looked everywhere around here for support and for recovery housing, and there was none. But I just want to say, I resp, I support this, because I see a lot of people in, come into recovery programs, and they're just in a cycle. You know, they go in, and they're all for getting clean, and they can't find the support they need. We can provide only so much support, we can't be with them day to day, and I think Inspiration's doing an amazing job where they are now, and if we could bring that here, I think it would really help our community, and not seeing just the cycle of people coming out of jail and going back in, and just the destructions of their lives. So with that, I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Andrew Foster, President of Inspiration Ministries. I thought I would just share a little bit, I don't know if you guys knew, but we had a survey going around with some of the public in the county, and I thought it'd be an opportunity just to share some of the results about the significance of the project. And I'll keep it pretty brief, but here were some questions that were on the survey, said, we had a hundred and eighteen people submit answers to the survey. One of the questions, how significant do you believe the need for recovery housing in LaGrange County is? We had ninety-five percent say very significant. Does the community current, current, current amount of recovery housing facilities and beds meet the needs? Ninety-six percent, as you can imagine, said no. And does substance abuse have an impact on the local community? Ninety-seven percent said yes. And has substance abuse been a longtime issue in the community? We had ninety-two percent say yes. And so hopefully that helps highlight some of the significant need, and then we had lots of responses that people wrote, but one that I'd share in particular was just this, it said, "The need for recovery housing in LaGrange County is significant, because while outpatient substance use treatment exists, there are no certified recovery residences locally to support people after treatment. This creates a critical, critical gap during one of the most vulnerable phases of recovery, when stable, substance-free housing greatly reduces relapse risk. Without local recovery housing, individuals may return to unsafe and triggering environments, or be forced to seek housing outside the county. Expanding recovery housing would strengthen long-term recovery outcomes and improve overall community health and stability." Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, my name's John Drum, I'd just like to say that I very much support Inspiration Ministries Bethesda House going up in LaGrange County. I briefly spoke last time, and I'll speak briefly now. The first time coming out of prison, I paroled from, from Kentucky to my mom and dad's here in LaGrange County, it was, it was a safe home, okay? Had, I had a good support system, although that support system failed me, because I wasn't surrounded with people in this, with, that needed the same type of support system from drug addictions and alcoholism, and all those other things that I was doing in my life. Okay? So as I say, I'm supporting Bethesda House, the Inspiration Ministry, strictly because mainly, one of the main reasons is, is that it's a support system, it's an ongoing nine-month program for the men in the program to engage with each other, to go over the issues that they have with their drug addictions, their alcoholism in their life, and they, they actually, that kind of support system is engaged, you, you get, you get stronger benefits from that type of system than you do just by somebody saying, this is how you're supposed to live your life. We can, they're engaged in a, in, in, in the loving, caring of the household, where they all have the, some, some of the same issues, and they're able to strengthen each other as time goes by. I just want to say, I thank you for your time, I appreciate you, I bless you, have a good day.
My name's Brandon Miller, I just want to speak from my experience as a jail and prison chaplain, over the years I've been a chaplain at Michigan City, Indiana State Prison for thirteen years, and the county jail here for five. So I've spent much time with, with incarcerated individuals as they look to come out of prison, and looking for places to go, and, and so many, so many come out and have nowhere to go, and we, they spend their time in prison, they, they improve their life, they go through purposeful incarceration, they go through programs, then they come out and get, are put in an environment where, where it's difficult to stay clean. I, I pictured, as you know, you, you take a shower, but you live in the pigpen, and you can't, you're not gonna stay clean. And I feel recovery housing, I can't speak specifically to Inspiration Ministries, I haven't been involved with that, but I've, I've been involved with Teen and Adult Challenge in Elkhart and Psalm Fifty-One Ranch up in Sturgis. I feel recovering housing gives a place for someone to get clean and learn how to live their life in that manner. And I think for, for the county, there's no greater investment in the county than investing in the people, and you can invest in pagers and all these different kinds of things that are important, but the people of the county are really what make the county. And I think this project is an investment in the county, and it's needed, there's, there are other, there is other recovering housing, housing in surrounding counties, but there's nothing here. And as a chaplain in LaGrange, I think it'd be great if I can tell guys, when, when you get out, just walk around the corner, go right up, right up there, there's a place that's gonna help you get on your feet. Is it gonna work for everyone? Of course it's not. It takes men that are willing to change their lives. You can, there's lots of people been in recovering housing. You can, there's lots of people been in recovering housing that it didn't work, but there, but I know personally, I know men whose lives have completely changed, it's made an impact in, in their families, it's gonna make an impact for generations, you know? There was a guy from La Grange that I know that I helped get into Teen and Adult Challenge in Elkhart, his life completely changed, he's reconnecting with his family, and generations will be impacted in a positive way for, and souls are being won for the Lord. So I do support this ministry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that concludes the public comment. That's all I have on the public side of things.
Okay. Kurt?
Yeah, I think a couple of things to point out for you as you sit there and deliberate about what to do next. There are some statements that I would like you to make if you're going to, but I think the most important thing that I need to point out for you are really two things as you consider this. One, you already passed the resolution despite the recent email we got from Region Three A, wondering if you know where it was. It was done December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We can do it again today if they need it. I don't understand why they would need it a second time, but the resolution committing the five hundred dollars authorizing the application and as a condition having the hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars from Inspiration Ministry, you already passed that back in December. It was one of those rush items that we had to accommodate them, and you did. So I don't know why we're being asked to do a second one today, but you could, I suppose, do a second one. It's ready.
We only sent them the three documents that they needed immediately at that time.
So for whatever it's worth, we, you've already done it. I don't believe you need to do it again, but I don't want to be the one to say we don't. So I think we should hear from Region Three A and Sandra as to whether or not this is adequate. If not, I have a second one ready for you today that accomplishes the same thing I have. Okay. So that's the first thing.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
If, if, if it's done, that's fine, we just didn't receive it. It's one of those that we just didn't receive out for word, so that's fine if it was done.
So it seems like that's addressed.
Yes.
So I don't believe you need to pass it again. I just don't want to be making that decision for you. That's something that, you know, I want you to make sure you're comfortable. The second thing, which is, you know, the, the hardest part of all of this is that not the commit, committing of the land and not the committing of the money is that you're committing, you know, to ensure compliance with one of the items that was pointed out in the document that was given to Terry to sign back in December is legal compliance. And I always hope for wisdom when I have to talk about this, but there's, you know, we didn't have the document given to us, we had to search for it. But we were given a link, the link didn't work, and so we had to find it on our own, which is fine, and we did. It's an eight-page document that talks about all the legal requirements that you three have to ensure compliance on, specifically Terry, has he signed previously. So if you move forward, which I assume you probably will, I guess that's up to you, you just have to understand that doing so doesn't come without potential consequences, that's all I'm trying to point out. If there's something wrong or you don't comply with those eight pages of documents of, you know, compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act and flood plain management and protection of wetlands and endangered species of fish and wildlife, Wild Scenic Rivers Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act and the Clean Air Act and Federal Water Pollution Control Act and the Clean Water Act and State Disposal Act, all these on and on and on ridiculous federal, that's, I shouldn't say ridiculous, federal requirements.
On a statement?
Okra grant. And so moving forward with the application, my job is to make sure you understand it is your job to ensure compliance, not Inspiration Ministry, not necessarily Region Three. You're the one that's on the hook. So unless somebody's helping you do that and understanding the impact of all of those things, you're at risk. Exposing the county to risk. What is the risk? Fines, repayment of the whole grant, et cetera, is what the documents say. So I don't know if everybody's read all of that, and I don't know Region Three A's position on that, or.
Why is, why is that?
Comply with all that, but that's more than giving the land, and it's more than five hundred dollars.
Because you're, it sounds like you're putting everything on the county.
So the county would be, they are the pass-through, since there's a subrecipient agreement with Inspiration Ministries, you guys would potentially, so the Okra would funnel you the money. The money goes out to Inspiration Ministries and they disperse it. So you're the fiscal agent, and you were talking the air, the, all of that is an environmental review, which is something that you guys signed off on last. So we have all of that environmental review documentation that we've gotten this far, SHPO, DNR, air, everything that Okra requires us to go through with the environmental review would cover that. We've already implemented that and we're receiving responses. We have all that documentation. As far as what you're signing off on with Okra and Inspiration Ministries, all of that falls on Inspiration Ministries. You guys are the fiscal pass-through. Now, when you get into auditing and that kind of thing, that is what could potentially, I would say, if a payment came through late or money was dispersed a couple of days late, that could come back as a finding with State Board of Accounts. Kathy, I think you and I worked together with the COVID grants. It's similar, it's, it's the similar process. Okra was the originator. We funneled money through and we passed on that money, and then it's very similar process with the bookkeeping side of things as that money goes and the closeout.
You know, I, I, I know there's a need for this and everything, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. The point, what I have concern about is how we're getting, seems like we're getting rushed to do this really fast. You know, and it just seems like it's being kind of rammed down our throats, we gotta do this, this, and this, and we get these emails and letters at the last minute that, to make these decisions and say these things. So is there another grant application after this one for this program?
Okra doesn't release that. They go off of HUD funds, they hope, they can't, you didn't want to talk, I'm sorry. And they hope that they will release another, another grant application cycle this year. They won't tell us if that's actually going to be the case or not. So I can't say yes in twenty twenty-six, that will happen.
I'm speaking myself, because I don't know what's, my name is going on a lot of this stuff, and I gotta say things and do things that, you know, I don't know if I'm a hundred percent comfortable with, so that's my concern. I don't know what these two guys are thinking, but that's just some of the concerns I have.
Sure.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak up here and tell you, I, I like the, the idea of what you're doing, your, your, I am, what's your, you know, the addicts and taking care of the people, but I just think there's increasingly concern with the risk that we're taking. You know, being, whatever you say, but county attorney's gone through this, I've read it, of course, I read it different than him, but I think we're taking risks that we did not know about. I mean, very simply, I thought we gave you the land to build the place, give you five hundred dollars, and we were done. Now we've came back with all kinds of contracts, amendments to sign, and I think there's more risk in there that, that, that we knew about.
A hundred percent understand. Just to let you know, or just to remind you, so this is the third time that we've done this grant, and the city of Butler accomplished it with us in twenty twenty-one, and the city of Kenneville is accomplishing it right now. We're eighty percent through that project in Kenneville. No compliance issues, no issues whatsoever. I appreciate what your attorney is saying, what Kurt is saying, and I'm not gonna sit here and say that there's not risk involved, but it is federal money, it's HUD money. And so what comes along with that is, it's a lot of legalese that comes with that and lots of paperwork. I, I would probably say it, I can't imagine it's that dissimilar from other grants that you've gotten, whether that was state funding or federal funding. It's gonna come with a, a lot of regulations, it's gonna come with a lot, a lot of words, and, and I could say that I wish it wasn't the case, but I know that's just what comes with it. And, and Kurt just read a bunch of things that are literally linked to an environmental study. I mean, that's it, it's a piece of land, we have to get environmental study. And there's eight departments that have to respond from the state or the federal level, and we, there's no control for us to, to know that. The Clean Air Act, I couldn't even tell you what it means to comply with a Clean Air Act. We're not, you know, we're not building an industry, we're not gonna create smoke. But I know that they have, they have to do their due diligence on their side, so there is a lot of paperwork. But I can, I can assure you, I can assure you that we have, we have done this project twice. We are committed to the project and the money. We will, at the end of the day, when this is done, we will be coordinating with Kathy more than anybody. Right now, in the city of Kenneville, what we experienced in Butler is that as the project proceeds, they, the, the engineer, Martin Riley, will create pay schedules, they work with the contractor through this bidding process. And the state will cut a check to La Grange County, and that will come in, and Kathy will record that, she'll write a check to Inspiration Ministries, we pick that check up, and then we pay the contractor for this work. It's a very simple process, where, again, we've done this a few times. We are, we're recording everything on our end that's being paid for. Kathy will be aware of every invoice, every, you know, thing that is going on. We've never missed a payment, we've never been late, we have to have reports that we have to file, we're very timely in doing that. And again, I say all that to say not to, not to convince you that you're like alleviating risk, because any grant that somebody's gonna give us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or millions of dollars, which this isn't the case there, they're always gonna be linked, there's always gonna be compliance linked to it. And I, I wish, I wish there was more time, and I can personally, you know, say, I, I'm sorry that this is the case, but I, I kid you not, we literally got that email in the middle of November. There was no anticipating when it was gonna be done, and for whatever reason, they create a short timeframe. One of the reasons they do create a short timeframe is because they're trying to, they're trying to create applicants, which we, we would like to feel like we're a competitive applicant, applicants that can accomplish these projects. And in, in, this will be six years of these three grant awards. We are the only organization that has received grant funding from Okra and has gotten their project off the ground. We're the only ones. And I'm thankful to be able to say that. We have an incredible, I have an incredible team, I have an incredible board of directors. We've had tremendous personal support from this community, we've had over a hundred thousand dollars raised just from people in this county that want to see this happen. And so, you know, I'm here to, just to implore you to give us the opportunity. I have an attorney on my board. We, we will work as closely as we are required to, and more than that, to make sure that this project is completed, that it is in compliance, and that it meets every single regulation that has, that has happened. And so your guys is willing to do this, I know that it has felt a bit rushed, and again, I, I wish it could be different. And it, it would be maybe, if I could even say that this grant award will ever come, but there is a chance that literally, no exaggeration, there's a chance that this grant award will never, ever come back around. And so I, I think it's a unique opportunity for us to accomplish something that is gonna make an incredible impact in this community. And again, with all my heart, with our board of directors, I have my board chair here in the back down, Harvey, we are with, we are in this with you to the final, till the final stick goes up, and there are people living in that bed, and we're celebrating, we're celebrating this project together as a county. And so again, I know that there's a lot of signs and there's a lot of paperwork, we've read all of that paperwork, but we are absolutely gonna be a part of this in every step of the way. And my hope is that you will agree to continue the project going forward.
So your other two projects, how, how fast do they have to move? Were they less, were those easier than?
No, it was, it was very similar. It was very similar. The, the turnaround from the announcements for Butler and Kenneville, I mean, I, similar to the proposal, I bet we didn't have more than eight weeks to get the proposal done. We would do the site review similar that we did with Ms. Ham, Mrs. Hammond a few weeks ago, and Terry, you were there.
Yeah.
Very similar processes.
Okay. Sandra, you handed this thing here, the, this public statement you want me to make here. You, as you heard, we got this county garage thing, to me, as a, as a high priority too, so is this statement gonna supersede that, or is this just something that?
So it's a, it's something that they want to know, that you are in support of the project.
Okay.
That it's, that is, it is a priority. They're not saying, they're not, they don't want to show this is a priority over something else, it's just a priority.
Okay. But we're still in need of some written assurances of what's been said. Am I correct in that comment, that statement?
I think really that's up to you. What you're relying on at this point is their verbal representations, that they're gonna make sure that, that compliance is in order. Now, what you have to remember is they're both not-for-profit organizations, they are not municipalities. Municipalities don't go away, not-for-profit organizations do. And so if they're not there someday, and there's a compliance issue, ultimately this county is on the hook for it. So you can talk about written assurances, and you can talk about, we've done this before, and we're gonna do it the same again, and hopefully all that will be true. In the end, it's my job to make sure you understand that you are ultimately accountable for this.
It's a chance. I mean, it's, it's a chance that, I mean, we've taken chances in other grants before, so I know, but. I'd be more concerned if it was the first one.
I would be too, if we'd never done anything.
Never done it before, not, so. I don't know, Pete, what do you think?
In my mind, it's an, it's a bit of an unknown to this board, what our future expenses will be with this. That is nerve-wracking to me because the council has to approve whatever we want to spend. You know, if we can't put something in our budget, I, I'm very supportive of this project, and I think it needs to go forward. I just don't know, how do you get there is my, is my issue as far as, there's obviously gotta be a lot of trust between us and your, both your groups.
The, the other two entities that are involved in this, have, has there been any cost to them at all since they approve these projects?
Zero.
Zero?
Zero cost at all. Yeah, and, and yeah, I mean, we've, we've estimated the project at nine hundred thousand. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant will pass through you in our, in the five hundred from the council, which we're appreciative of. We're committed to the other hundred and fifty. And, you know, say the infrastructure costs a little more, we're gonna pay that bill. We're gonna pay that bill and sign assurances and, and what, we, we'll sign anything, it doesn't, we're on the hook.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a, is a blessing, if it costs us a million dollars, and we're gonna, you know, pay the two fifty. I mean, not only have we accomplished two Okra grants, but we've also accomplished two point three million dollars in affordable housing program grants, both in Kenneville and Butler. And we don't get opiate money for that. And so when we get, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from an AHP grant, the project costs us nine, we, our board commits that hundred, other hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so the resolution right now, or whatever's been signed, is, is us committing, we're, we're committed to a hundred and fifty, that's, that's in, that's in writing, that's, that's already been done. We're gonna take care of that. And anything north of that, I mean, that's, that's gonna be on us. We're gonna pay those bills in, in every way, shape, or form. And in fact, in, in the estimate right now, is even anything that involves the engineer, it's not even included in that. We're gonna pay that. Like that, those bills are gonna come to Inspiration Ministries. And so, yeah, so as far as costs, we, the city of Butler and the city of Kenneville have never paid one penny towards these projects. They have gotten their money, they write us checks, we pay the contractors, that's it.
We understand our concerns.
Of course, I, I, one hundred percent.
You know, we represent La Grange County, the taxpayers and everything too, you know, so we want to make sure we're doing the right thing by them, so. And like I said, I have no problem with, it's, it's a need, it's out there, the survey put out, there's, there's a reason for it, so just have some concerns, you know, we got these late-minute emails again, as, you know, and it just throws up some red flags, and I hate to use the analogy that it seemed like I'm being pressured into buying a used car, so that's kind of what it feels like to me a little bit, so. But I don't, you know, I'm not, nothing bad against you guys, it's just how I, how I felt.
No, and we totally understand, and you guys have been incredibly gracious with your time to accept us and to hear about it. We understand the timeframe, and it's a unique opportunity, so that's why we're here, just kind of continuing to employ you.
You know, I had some questions, concerns, and that, you know, and I, you know, I was reading this over the weekend and that, you know, and just, it was some things that came up, and I understand where Kurt's coming from, you know, he's looking out for best interest for us too and everything, but, so we just need to decide what we want to do here and going forward and.
I hesitate to say this, but I almost, and this is nothing. I hesitate to say this, but I almost, and this is nothing against OPAH or anything like that. I would almost be more comfortable if the county just said, we're going to foot the bill and put this up. It eliminates all this future questions, and I mean, I appreciate the grants, but all the stuff you have to spend afterwards, or to comply with free money is, is frustrating. But, I mean, I support it completely, it just.
We'll see.
Kevin asked me a question, and I think it's fair for me to explain to everyone what he asked. Will I sign this document? And the document they want me to sign talks about relocation, and that's not an issue, because it's vacant land. But if they want me to sign at some point in time, just so everybody knows that you complied with this eight-page legal document, that the document says you are complying with, there's no way I'm going to sign something like that without having due diligence conducted. So I don't know, if their lawyer's going to sign it, that's great, he can have at it, she or whoever, but I'm not signing something that acknowledges eight pages of legal compliance without due diligence. I just don't do that. It would be irresponsible.
Understand that, so. Do you understand what he's saying? Is there anything that he would have to sign in the future?
Just the, no. There's nothing else to sign in the future.
Okay.
The only signature that's asked of Mr. Bachman is the signature page, that CDWG signature page. I think that's the one you're referencing, yeah.
You have no issue with that one?
I have lots of issues.
Well, I know, but.
I'm willing to sign that particular one in this situation.
All right.
Now, you feel like you're buying the used car? The, back to the environment, the whole list of things, and you guys, you said OPAH is going through that, doing that.
Yep.
Do we, how do, this isn't, how do, how does the county, who's the, obviously, the ultimate responsible, know that it was done? I mean, do we get information, do we get?
So I think over the weekend, or maybe yesterday, Mr. Martin, I think we got a.
Yeah, we got a from.
Assigned, that each agency will review, and they will sign a letter stating, this is what we find. And those are the letters that have to be provided to OPAH once, basically, once this application is submitted and approved, OPAH will go through and say, okay, give us all these documents. And Shippo is actually the one that takes the longest time, and he, they copied Commissioner Martin on that yesterday. So that's very similar to what you would see from like DNR, Fish and Wildlife, and whatever, there's a handful of agencies.
I'll send it to you guys, it's, they said there was nothing, they found no environmental things there. Am I right with that?
Yeah, you're correct, that one was from Shippo, and since it's vacant land, they're not going to find anything.
No, there's no historical stuff, no, yeah, there's, we have no, have not identified an historical building, structures, districts, or objects listed or eligible for inclusion in National Register of Historic Places, and, you know, and other stuff in there, so, yeah. They just got that one, so yesterday, I think.
Yeah, so the initial ER is almost complete. If the application is awarded, OPAH requires the environmental review, environmental review documentation to be submitted.
Kevin, anything else?
No, I do not.
So what are you guys thinking?
I'd like to ask the council if they'd fund it.
That ain't going to happen.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think they would do that, is my problem. And I do think this is a need for the county.
Oh, definitely.
A desperate need, and I don't know how else you get it without doing that. I don't see any organization in this county big enough or willing, shouldn't say big enough, or willing, to step up and put something like this in place.
I have no problem with the program itself, I just, you know, our December meeting we had, whatever it was, you know, I thought it was a $500, here's the land, and all of a sudden, we have all this stack of legal documents to go through, and but.
Mr. Bach has spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
And like I said, it's, it's a chance, I mean, it's, I'm just going by the last two they built, they've had new issues with those two places down there and everything, and and that, and I don't foresee any issues up here, which, you know, unforeseen is what concerns me a little bit, so, but.
Your name's on the line.
Yeah. Sure. Forever. So, but.
I mean, I, I guess there obviously is risk, and
So for.
I'm willing to take the risk, I guess.
If we're going forward this, what, what kind of motion are you looking for?
Well, she wants that statement.
Yeah.
On the record. And originally, like I said, she wanted you to pass this resolution, which is already passed.
Already passed, yeah. Anything else other than the statement? Sandra, what do you, what do you need besides the, you get, the resolutions aren't even passed?
The resolution passed, so I'll just, I'll just need a copy of that, you know, before application, but other than that.
That statement here?
Yeah, and.
You guys?
You're signing it.
I'm not signing, I'm just saying that, so.
Being recorded, by the way.
I know, this is all being recorded, so. I'll be honest with you, when I got this, this email this weekend, I had really strong reservations, I was to the point where I wasn't going to do this. I mean, that's just how I felt at the time, I, you know, looked at this, but that's why I wanted to listen to you some more and ask some questions about that, and.
Yeah, and this is what, this is what we do.
Yeah, and it's nothing against you guys personally, you just got to understand where we're coming from too.
Yeah, we totally understand.
It's just been, it's, it's been a rush job.
Yeah, it's a quick, probably one of the quickest turnarounds that OPAH has asked.
Yeah, and it's, just feel kind of rushed, and normally, I like to sit back and take the time and make sure I know everything first, so.
I understand.
But, so. I'll just, I'll make this announcement, this project is a priority for the county, and that the county is committed to meeting all OPAH requirements for this. And that's saying that, you know, we have other priorities too in this county, but this is going to be one of them, so. Is that good enough for you? Any other questions or anything?
Hope it works.
Yeah, yeah. Don't come and ask for money.
It'll work.
Absolutely not.
You have my support.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, can you close the public hearing?
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing for the OPAH grant.
Thank you.
Okay, Treasurer, Connie?
Good morning. I have the agreement, or Kurt has the agreement ready for the tax sale vendor for the next year. Our tax sale is set up for September 15th. They have complied with everything that the attorney needed them to comply with, so I believe it's ready, ready for a signature, if you agree.
And just for the record, this is the government utilities, technologies.
Guts.
I didn't really want to say that, but.
As long as you're okay with it, and you guys are fine.
Whose signature, just yours or mine?
Yours. According to our county attorney, everything's supposed to go through the commissioners.
Thanks, Kurt.
I'll make a motion to approve the addendum with guts for the tax sale, September, for September 15th.
September 15th.
September 15th, and have the president sign it.
Second.
Bit motion second to approve the guts contract, have the president sign, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then also at staff meeting, I had brought up the old projects that are still on my books. I am asking for you to allow me to write off these two projects. There was one from 2013, for, it was the Woodland Hills project. The balance of that one is $1,259.28. Only $296.98 of that was principal, the rest is interest and penalty. And the second one was a 2017 project, Orland Brock. And the balance of that is $714.61. The original principal was $260.80, leaving all of the rest of that as interest and penalty. I talked to the surveyor, Zach Holsinger, and he is on board with this being written off, if you so please.
Would have more attorney fees going after it.
Trying to go after it, James.
And.
So I make a motion to allow Connie to write off the sewer bills for the two subjects mentioned.
Second.
You have motion second to allow Connie to write off the two bills presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. And just so you know, they are not being handled that way anymore, so this should not be an ongoing problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Review extension.
Hi, good morning, Jeff Burberry with LaGrange County's Extension Office, and since it's about December, our copy machine's been failing. In January, we had it serviced, and the gentleman told us that the fingers bring the paper through are failing on the processor, and so one copy at a time, and then gather them together in a stable, and it will not collate or anything like that, so. We're coming up on this period of time, and we use the machine pretty extensively for our 4-H program, March, April, and they are our big printing months. So I worked with Jenny, talking to Joel Gregory of Canon. He made us two different offers, one was a monthly lease, $459.62, or 63 months, or to buy out at the end of that lease. The other option was to purchase it outright, $16,028.60. That doesn't include any shipping costs or tariff fees or anything like that, it's just a flat fee. I spoke to our business office at Purdue, and they are willing to pay the $10,028.60 of that. That amount, if the county can come up with $6,000 for that machine, and we would have, we would go ahead and continue to pay stapler for staples and toner, and all the other kind of supplies that would be needed out of our county budget as needed. So that's our request. Jenny's been very helpful in this process, as has Kathy's.
Where's $6,000 come out of?
You do have incorporation in Q cap development, which would be incorporated.
Because it is an asset.
And it's, Q cap is self-use for clipping buildings and.
Yeah. You think, I mean, I think they're going to need it.
They're going to need it. Make a motion to allow Purdue Extension to purchase the copier, and we'll take $6,000 out of Q cap development to pay our share of it.
$6,028.
$6,000 even.
$6,000 even.
It's covering the $28.60.
Oh, it is covering the $28.60.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't $28.60 short. Second.
Bit motion second to approve the purchase of the copy machine for Purdue Extension, and have the county pay $6,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks. Assessor Form 11 contract.
Phil Grimes with the assessor's office comes out bill today, so I'm stepping in her place. We have selected Midwest Presort to send out our Form 11s this year. And we have a signed notarized agreement, which Mr. Bachman has already looked over. And that was for $14,576.22. We do have it in our budget to cover that amount. We've, we've been happy with their work in the past, and I do have a copy of the agreement, if you'd like to see it. And I guess that's all I have.
I gave the signed agreement to Kevin, he has it.
Okay.
I agree with the statement she's made, and we would recommend her.
I see no issues with it, it's just frustrating to me that postage is more than the service.
Yeah.
I mean, something is wrong in this world when you get paid more to deliver something than what it's worth to do.
President, or is it?
President, yes.
So I'll make a motion.
Sign two by them, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Midwest Presort agreement for the Form 11 mailings. I guess it's just Midwest Presort, is that?
Mm-hmm.
And have the president sign.
Second.
Bit motion second to approve the Form 11 contract, have the president sign, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks. Parks?
We would like to have the wood floors and wood tables at Pine Knobry done, so I emailed you the quotes, I got quotes from three different places. We would like to go with Stony Acres Woodworking. The total, they had it in two different quotes, one for the tables and one for the chair, or floors, but total was $6,552.19.
It was an email, she's.
Kathy has it, fine.
This is $5,456.
No, there's two, there's two.
Did one separate from the other.
They had the tables separate from the floor. The other two combined them all.
Lot less than the other guy.
Yeah, and they're in county.
I make motion to approve the parks to have the, I guess the floors finished, the tables finished at Pine Knob for the amount listed.
Good answer. Second.
Bit motion second to approve Stony Acres to do the work at Pine Knobs for the Parks Department, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Plan Department, Robbie?
So we have three things this morning for your agenda, the first one is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. Through the process of developing the UDO, construction trades establishments, or just missed, just excluded.
Construction trades.
Yeah, and for the number of contractors we have in LaGrange County, that was a terrible oversight we made. And so, it went to the Plan Commission for an amendment to the UDO to add construction trades establishments. Added it as a permitted use in A1, A2, B3, I1, and I2. And so, we would like to have a favorable recommendation from the commissioners also on this.
Can, it's already been assigned A?
It looks like it.
2026-2-10.
So that's the Plan Commission, ours is going to be counted in there.
The one that says 17.
Okay.
Commissioners.
Sorry, I was like, we already had an A today.
There's a lot of papers there.
There is a lot of papers here. If I can find it. Well, I assumed it was our, ours was in yours, right? Okay. And this would be C, correct? So we already did two of them?
Yes, ours would be C.
Yes, okay, so I make a motion to approve the, the UDO ordinance number 2026-02-17-C. I have something I'll have to sign it.
Second. Yeah, motion second to approve ordinance number 2026-02-17-C, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. For second.
Motion to a second reading.
Second. Motion second to wave second reading, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
The second item I have on the agenda is a rezone petition. It was given a positive recommendation. Um, it was given a positive recommendation by the plan, or favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission on last Tuesday's meeting. It's for Wilbur and Mary Schmidt. It's north on State Road Nine, um, just north of Howe. It's actually approximately an eight acre parcel north of the, uh, La Grange County Regional Utility District, um, property there. So again, the Plan Commission gave it a favorable recommendation.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, Wilbur and Mary Emma Schmidt.
You want the ordinance number? You want the ordinance number?
Gosh, we can read it.
Ordinance number two zero two six dash zero two dash seventeen.
D.
Dash blank.
D.
D.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to second to approve the ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the third one on the agenda this morning is for RH Yoder, or Richard Yoder. There, it is a planned unit development. He has a custom furniture business, um, that they would like to expand. He also lives on the property. So it's approximately about twenty-three acres, and so him and his son, they would like to have the zoning switched to a planned unit development, so it meets the purposes of the ground. Um, that they have the business on plus the, uh, residential use of the property. So this one is located at twenty-three sixty-five South, eleven hundred West, um, in Shipshawano. Again, the Plan Commission gave it a favorable recommendation also.
Okay, they're doing what we want them to do, so I guess that's a good thing. So I will make a motion to approve the the ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero two dash seventeen dash E.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, I was just.
You're okay.
Um, got a motion to second to approve the ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Prosecutor, somebody from prosecutor here?
Um, they are not, but they sent me the information. Excuse me, she's ill and cannot read it. They're asking for permission to use the, um, courthouse. Um, on Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-six at five, they would like to hold sexual assault awareness and child abuse prevention events on the courthouse lawn and in the gazebo. I believe they've, um, checked with Gary and made sure that it was available. Um, also on Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six, is National Denim Day. They would like permission for county government employees to wear denim. Um, as long as they donate at least a dollar. All proceeds go, um, to the county sheriff's office or transportation expenses to the Sexual Assault Treatment Center. And then they would also like permission to do the sidewalk chalk, um, around the courthouse to bring awareness to sexual assault and to prevent those and to support those who have been a victim. That would be the week of April sixth, depending on weather. So we're asking for approval for those three events that they've done in previous years.
No, it's.
I make a motion to approve the prosecutor's office, uh, giving permission for other sexual assault awareness activities, uh, for all three listed.
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve the request from prosecutor's office for sexual awareness week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. County annual financial report?
Um, so you were sent the annual financial report, um, and so I just need your approval of that. Let me just say it again. There it is. Lots of numbers, pretty columns, love it.
This is the financial, or is this the?
I did the financial.
Okay, yeah. No, that's good.
The county annual one, yeah.
Annual, yeah, I said the annual one.
Right.
I make a motion to accept the county annual financial report.
For approval, second.
Got a motion to second to approve the county, county annual financial report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The orders financial report.
Uh, for the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, uh, confirmed cash and deposits in the amount of fifty-five million, six hundred ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Investments of nineteen million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Just need approval of that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve accounts payable, or I'm sorry, orders financial report. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Accounts payable.
Nothing outstanding to me.
No, it looked fine.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve accounts payable vouchers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Minutes from February second, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve the minutes from February second, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Memorandum from, um, regular meeting from, uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty-six.
Um, yes. And then also the executive session on, uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I didn't have it on there. Also executive session, same date.
Okay, motion to approve the, uh, executive session and the meeting, uh, February the eleventh.
Second.
That's approved.
Got a motion to second to approve the memorandum from, uh, and the executive session from February eleventh, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. If you guys have anything else?
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.